Thank you very much, Mr. Valdez. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Natalie Cordova and the Deputy State Auditor. Thank you for being here with us today. The public hearing on the proposed 2021 version of the Audit Rule 2.2.2 NMAC will now come to order. The time is 1:31 PM on March 1st, 2021. Thank you for joining us digitally through Teams or by telephone for this COVID-safe public hearing. We request that all in attendance, please remain on mute unless you are talking. You may use the closed captioning feature in Teams by turning on live captions under the settings at the ellipses. This hearing is being recorded. During this rule hearing, members of the public will be given the opportunity to submit data, views, or arguments orally or in writing. Individuals wishing to provide public comment or submit information at the hearing must state their name and any relevant affiliation for the record and be recognized before presenting. Any individual who provides public comment at the hearing may be questioned by the Office of the State Auditor for clarification purposes or at the discretion of the agency by other persons at the hearing. If you wish to speak and are attending digitally, you may use the Raise Your Hand function, put a comment in the chat, or speak up during any of the many prompts for comment throughout today's hearing. Members of the public attending telephonically may speak during any of the prompts for comment, which will follow each proposed change or public comment. In the interest of efficiency, the Office of the State Auditor may exclude or limit comments or questions deemed irrelevant, redundant, or unduly repetitious. During the hearing, the Office of the State Auditor may ask follow-up questions and provide comments for clarification purposes, but generally will refrain from providing opinions or engaging in discussion regarding the merits of the proposed rule change or any public comment presented. All members of the Office of the State Auditor participating remotely will identify themselves whenever they speak and be clearly audible. The Office of the State Auditor will suspend discussion if the audio or video is interrupted during this hearing until connection is restored or free from interruption. With those introductory remarks out of the way, I happily turn it over to our State Auditor, Brian Cologne, for opening remarks. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Deputy Auditor Natalie Cordova, CPA extraordinaire. Thank you for providing those opening remarks. Thank you and welcome to all our team members at the Office of the State Auditor who have joined us today along with those members of the public and our stakeholders who have also engaged with us in this hearing to amend 2.2.2 NMAC, also fondly referenced as the Audit Rule. This is our third audit rule that we're promulgating in my 791 days of awesome as your State Auditor. I appreciate that very much. And I'm so thrilled that you're able to join us. We welcome all your input. I want to say, let's see, is it our second or third, Madam Deputy? I just was thinking about that. It's our, it is our third, right? Okay, see, I got to look to the staff just to make sure they're paying attention and they correct me when I'm wrong or they give me positive feedback like Jesse did just now and said that I actually correct. So we appreciate that. And let me begin by giving a special thank you to Jesse and Lisa, who have really led the way and leaned in to making sure that we received all the comments and that we responded to the comments and that we could took them into contemplation with our financial division led by Lynette Kennard, who's also with us today, and all the great members of our team. And I, I want to say, Mr. Sero, thank you for joining us today. And a special shout out to your incredible daughter, who was just inducted into the National Honor Society Hall of Fame. Maybe not the Hall of Fame, but she's actually a member now. So congratulations there. Look, I want to thank all of our stakeholders for engaging in this process formally or informally and continuing to allow us to keep open dialogue front and center at the Office of the State Auditor. Together, we can make a significant impact through the financial oversight and accountability that we provide all our stakeholders, most importantly, 2.1 million New Mexicans who count on us to be the oversight agency with independence that embraces accountability, transparency, and excellence in our work. I'm grateful to each and every one of you for your diligent efforts. This past year, we've all successfully adapted under the COVID-19 pandemic to challenging circumstances and done so while meeting deadlines and continuing to provide invaluable work and access for transparency in government. I'm proud of our office at the Office of the State Auditor for continuing to have the most sincere commitment to responsiveness and accessibility and availability to each and every one of our stakeholders and the public. I wanted to say thank you for attending today's hearing. And the purpose of today's hearing, I respectfully request that all the members of the public who joined us, we're glad you're here. It's important to have you be a part of this process. But today in particular, at least over the next couple hours, we're going to ask that the public maintain, out of respect for this being a public hearing, your comments and feedback. We're going to ask you to limit that to the 2.2.2 NMAC, the promulgation of the Audit Rule of New Mexico. So we'll ask if you have other comments, other feedback, if you want to give us any suggestions, if you want to give me any constructive criticism on the last 791 days of awesome, you're always welcome to do that. We're going to make sure that Frank puts my phone number, maybe my direct line in the, do we have a chat turned on? We do, right? Okay, great. So you're going to have access to my direct email, I'm going to ask Mr. Valdez to put that in the chat along with my phone number. So if you've got any feedback that may not be directly on point to 2.2.2, we still want you to bring it, but not just in the next 120 minutes, all right? So thank you very much for being valued stakeholders of the New Mexico Office of the State Auditor. We appreciate you very much. And I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Kerr. Thank you, Lisa, for your leadership.
Thank you, Auditor Cologne. We'll proceed with today's hearing by first announcing all OSA members who are participating remotely. Jesse Gallegos, General Counsel. Lynette Kennard, Financial Audit Director. Stephanie Teas, Director of Government Accountability. Miranda Moscarenas, Special Director and CFO. Frank Valdez, IT Director. Sean Beck, Special Investigations Director. Lucia Santini, Audit Manager. Elena Tercero, Audit Manager. Anthony Sena, Audit Supervisor. Alana Goodman, Audit Supervisor. Rowan Randall, Senior Auditor. David Smith, Senior Auditor. And Benjamin Romero, Compliance Analyst. Let us move on to a brief explanation of the purpose and format of today's hearing. Agenda Item 3, Discussion of Purpose and Format of Hearing. My name is Lisa Kerr. I'm the Director of Compliance and Quality Control at the Office of the State Auditor, and I will be acting as the moderator for this hearing. The purpose of this hearing is for the Office of the State Auditor to receive public comments on proposed amendments to 2.2.2 NMAC, requirements for contracting and conducting audits of agencies, better known as the Audit Rule. Public notice of this hearing was published in the New Mexico Register on the Office of the State Auditor's website and on the Sunshine Portal. Copies of the proposed Audit Rule are available on the Office of the State Auditor's website and on the Sunshine Portal. A public comment period began today, or began on January 26th, 2021, and concluded as of today's date. The Audit Rule is promulgated pursuant to the Audit Act of NMSA 1978, Section 12-6-12, which requires the State Auditor to promulgate reasonable regulations necessary to carry out the duties of the office, including regulations necessary to carry out duties of the office, including regulations required for conducting audits in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. Additionally, NMSA 1978, Section 12-6-3A, requires audits of agencies and local public bodies to be conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and rules issued by the State Auditor. The Office of the State Auditor updates the Audit Rule each year, and we really appreciate your participation in this process. With regard to public comments, the Office of the State Auditor received two written comments during the public comment period, which formally ended on March 1st, 2021. As stated in the notice of proposed rulemaking, the written comments have been pre-marked and admitted as Exhibits 1 through 2. For purposes of identifying comments received, the comment marked as Exhibit 1 was received on February 10th, 2021 from Ms. Moon regarding 2.2.8 F3 NMAC. The comment marked as Exhibit 2 was received on February 26th, 2021 from Mr. Bowers with Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram LLC regarding 2.2.2.8 F3 NMAC, 2.2.2.10 J NMAC, and GASB Statement Number 84. Written comments will be discussed in further detail later in this meeting, later in this hearing. The State Auditor may rule on the admissibility of the exhibits offered for submission during this hearing. Exhibits already admitted into evidence are available for review by members of the public on the Office of the State Auditor's website and will be updated with any written comments admitted today. The Office of the State Auditor does not follow the rules of evidence. With regard to the format of this hearing, here is how we will proceed. I will give a brief overview of the comments we received on the proposed Audit Rule. We will then open the floor to comments from any member of the public on each particular topic and hear all comments on that topic before moving to the next topic. Following discussion of those specific areas, we will go through each of the proposed changes to the Audit Rule. Then open the floor to comments from any member of the public on each particular proposed change and hear all comments of that proposed change before moving to the next change. After the discussions of comments received and proposed changes, I will open the hearing to take comments from any members of the public on any topic related to the proposed Audit Rule. Any person can comment, read from or submit a written statement. Any written comments will be identified with as an exhibit and will be placed with other original exhibits if admitted. All comments will be considered in preparing and recommending the final form of the Audit Rule. Not all comments will result in changes to the Audit Rule. The volume of comments and their ultimate effect on any revisions could have an impact on the proposed publication date of the Audit Rule. After all comments and questions are complete, I will close the hearing. Let us proceed with discussion of the written comments the Office of the State Auditor received during the public comment period. Agenda Item 4, Discussion of Comments Received. Number 1. We received a missed comment from Ms. Moon with Burna Leo County regarding 2.2.2.8 F3 NMAC. The comment stated, "I would like the OSA to consider allowing governments to enter into three-year contracts with IPAs." This is on page 5 of the Audit Rule. Item 3. The agency is encouraged to request multiple-year proposals for audit and AUP services. However, the term of the contract shall be for one or one year only. The party shall enter into a new contract each year. Best regards, Pamela Moon. I will now open the hearing for comments or questions related to this public comment. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment or if you have any written comments to submit on this section. When I recognize you, please begin by stating your name and the agency or organization you represent. Auditor Cologne, I see your hand raised. Do you have the floor?
Thank you very much. And let me just say, I want to thank Pamela Moon for this, for this comment. I want to also take a moment to thank a few of the folks that have deeply engaged with our office, particularly in the last year, whether it's regarding the Audit Rule as the comments you'll see today or also those who have assisted us in working on legislation or throughout the year just increasing us in terms of our quality of making sure the lines of communication are open. So I want to say thanks to Daniel Trujillo, the New Mexico side of CPAs, folks like Audrey, Audrey's with us today, Ms. Harmio, thank you, Mr. Boone, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Venner. There's just so many great folks here that have really assisted me in carrying out the duties of State Auditor. And I thought that with Pamela Moon's comment here, it'd be a great place for me to just interrupt quickly with a comment of gratitude for all you folks. A.J. Bowers, I think engages with us in a conversation about the Audit Rule every year. I've just appreciated that, that commitment to excellence and continued dialogue. So again, I just want to take this minute to say thank you very much to a few of those special individuals and all of you stakeholders who continue to work with our office and my amazing team at the Office of the State Auditor. With that, I'll turn it back over to Lisa, who's called for any comments or questions related to this public comment that was submitted by Ms. Pamela Moon. Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Cologne. I see that Audrey Harmio has her hand raised. Ms. Harmio, you have the floor.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Auditor, for those nice comments. And I just wanted to mention that you, you do have an amazing team. And with that, I just wanted to have a comment supporting Ms. Moon's, um, her comment as far as a multi-year contract. I believe this was piloted in the past and something that I'm sure we would all appreciate to just decrease the red tape and be able to follow the procurement side of it as far as the one to three years, understanding that, of course, at any time, the contract could be stopped from one year to the next. But if the client wants to continue for the three years, then that is very, very helpful to have a multi-year contract as other professional service contracts are throughout the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moon. Do we have any other comments?
Thank you, Ms. Harmio.
Oh, Ms. Harmio, thank you. See, no more hands raised and hearing no more comments. I will move to the next item on the agenda. Exhibit 2. We received the following comments from Mr. Bowers with Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram LLC. "We appreciate the hard work and thought that goes into updating the State Audit Rule every year, and we thank you for the opportunity to participate in the process. Our firm has reviewed the proposed changes to the New Mexico State Audit Rule for 2021 and wanted to provide our comments on the proposed changes as noted below. 2.2.2.10 J6, Added Language Requiring IPAs to Evaluate and Test Controls as Related to PERA." The comment is, "The AICPA SLG Audit Guide already requires auditors to test census information at each participating entity. We don't feel that a requirement to test internal controls at each entity would be needed for additional audit support." 2.2.2.10 J7, Added Language Requiring IPAs to Evaluate and Test Internal Controls as Related to ERA. Same as above, the AICPA SLG Audit Guide already requires auditors to test census information at each participating entity. We don't feel that a requirement to test internal controls at each entity would be needed for additional audit support. Item 2.2.2.10 J17, Added Language Regarding NM-RHCA to Reflect the Requirements for PERA and ERA. The IPA shall evaluate and test internal controls regarding employee eligibility for NM-RHCA and other benefits. IPA shall evaluate risks associated with employees excluded from NM-RHCA and test that employees are properly excluded. Same as above, the AICPA SLG Audit Guide already requires auditors to test census information at each participating entity. We don't feel that a requirement to test internal controls at each entity would be needed for additional audit support. In addition, when looking at the draft State Audit Rule, some areas of questions that have arisen in the course of public practice, we have the additional questions and/or recommendations. 2.2.2.8 F3. With the change from six to eight-year rotation requirement, is there a clarification needed for how many years the multiple-year proposal cannot exceed? GASB Statement Number 84 Implementation. Has the Office considered a requirement to test the classification of funds which were previously reported as agency funds for proper implementation of GASB Number 84? Again, we appreciate the opportunity to contribute to the process of updating the State Audit Rule and continuing to partner with the Office of the State Auditor in order to better serve the citizens of the state of New Mexico. We also thank you and everyone in the office for consideration of our thoughts and your time and service to the state. Please contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Alan G., Quote, A.J. Bowers Jr., CPA, CITP Partner, Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram LLC. I will now open the hearing for comments or questions related to these sections from the audience. Please raise your hand, add a comment, or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment or if you have any written comments to submit on this section. When I recognize you, please begin by stating your name and, if appropriate, the agency or organization you represent. Kurt, Auditor Cologne, I see you have your hand raised. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. I would just take a quick minute. I noticed a couple more of our fantastic team members joined us. So I would say thank you for the comments that have been made so far, both written and from Ms. Harmio. But I want to welcome James Chang from our team who joined us. And I think, I'm not sure if we welcome Joe Cruz this, this afternoon. So welcome to James and Joe.
Thank you, Auditor Cologne. Are there any more questions or comments? I thought I saw another hand raised, but it looks like it went down. See, no more hands raised and hearing no more comments. I will move on to the next item on the agenda. Agenda Item 5, Discussion of Proposed Changes to the Audit Rule. I will now discuss each proposed change in order of occurrence. I will describe each proposed change, and after each proposed change, I will open the hearing for comments or questions related to these sections from the audience. Please raise your hand, add a comment, or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment or if you have any written comments to submit on a particular proposed change. When I recognize you, please begin by stating your name and the agency or organization you represent. 2.2.2.2 NMAC, Clarified Scope of Audit Rule to Include Reference to Local Public Bodies, Transactions, and Other Professional Services to More Closely Align with Audit Act, Including at NMSA 1978 12-6-3. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. See no hands raised and hearing no comments. I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.5 NMAC, Affected Date Now March 23rd, 2021, which is the date of the new audit, the new Audit Rule will be published. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. See no hands raised and hearing no more comments. I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.6 NMAC, Replace Reference to Forensic Audits with More General Forensic Accounting Engagements to Better Describe Types of Applicable Engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. See no hands raised and hearing no comments. I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 A4 NMAC, Add a Definition for a Test Engagement. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. See no hands raised and hearing no comments. I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 A5 NMAC, The definition of audit was revised to replace forensic audit with forensic accounting engagement. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. See no hands raised and hearing no more comments. I will move on to the next.
Yes? Kurt, sorry to interrupt you. I think Ms. Harmio might have a comment.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry if I did not see that. Ms. Harmio, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. On this, I guess I just have a question since it came about in a situation this past year of litigation support services. Many times, I'm just wondering if this covers litigation support services because many times it is not known if a forensic engagement is needed, is needed until an auditor can take a look at things and determine that. So I'm just curious if that has been considered already.
Thank you, Ms. Harmio. Your comment will be entered into the public comments and considered. considered in the drafting of the proposed audit rule. Are there any more comments or questions? Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 A6 NMAC Added Performing Audit or a Test Work as Defined in the Public Accountancy Act to the Definition of Auditor The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 C3 NMAC Added Definition for QUCIP, the Committee on Uniform Securities Identification Procedures. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. Added Definition for ECECD, the New Mexico Early Childhood Education and Care Department. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 I1 The definition of IPA revised to add performing professional services for agencies and local public bodies for further clarity. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing or hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 N4 NMAC Add a definition for non-a test engagement. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 R3 NMAC The definition for report revised to replace forensic audit with forensic accounting engagement. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.7 S4 Add a definition for special audit. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 A NMAC Clarify the Approved Firms List Pertains to a Test Engagements, Including Audits and AUPs. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Hearing no, seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 NMAC Remove the Requirement to List Professional Service Contracts in the Firm Profile The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 B NMAC Change, number one, change the word "shall" to "may" in the following sentence. An IPA that is included on the state auditor's list of approved firms for the first time may be subject to an OSA quality control review of the IPA's working papers. Number two, added clarification, as posted on the OSA's Audit Reports website to the following sentence. This review shall be conducted as soon as documentation completion date is defined by AUC Section 230 has passed 60 days after the report release date, as posted on the OSA's Audit Reports website. Number three, added references to other attest engagements for clarity. Number four, added clarification that firms only perform non-atest engagements or otherwise do not meet applicable requirements shall not be included on the list of approved firms. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 C NMAC Added for Audit AUP and Other Testing Engagements for Clarity as to applicability. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no comments, or seeing no hands raised, hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 D1 0 NMAC Added to Restriction Section Regarding Deficiency Considerations to Facilitate Failure to Have Contracts for Non-Attest Services Approved by the OSA. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 F NMAC Clarified Applicable Engagement Types The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 F5 Clarified Applicable Engagement Types The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 F6 NMAC Clarify Applicable Engagement Types Remove the sentence. Note that the IPA recommendation form no longer exists as a separate document because OSA Connect gathers and delivers to the OSA the information historically submitted on the IPA recommendation form. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 G1 Replace Forensic Audit with Forensic Accounting Engagement The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hand raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 G1 BI NMAC Added Language Providing for More Flexibility with Respect to the Rotation Requirement Change Six Years to Eight Years and Remove Reference to AUP Engagements The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 G2 NMAC Replace Forensic Audit with Forensic Accounting Engagement Removed Audit or AUP Proceeding Reports in Section J. The hearing is open for comments or questions relating to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 G3 NMAC Added Contract After Audit for Clarity Replace Forensic Audit with Forensic Accounting Engagement The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 H NMAC Abbreviated Agreed Upon Procedures to AUP and Added Email as an Option for OSA to Provide an Audit or AUP Engagement Contract to Agencies The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 L NMAC Move Necessary Portions of L1 and L2 to 2.2.2.15 B3 NMAC Change Reference to Current from December 2018 Provision Remove GAGAS Citation The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 M3 NMAC Change the Percentage from 70 to 69 in the following sentence. Progress payments up to 69% do not require state auditor approval provided that the agency certifies the receipt of services before any payments are made to the IPA. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised.
Do we have John Kennedy with a comment?
Sorry, my hands. Yeah, I think my hand's up, but it's hard to see at least. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
We can see and hear you, John Kennedy. Just wave that hand nice and big.
I had one question on this, and I was wondering if you would, 69% is a fairly low threshold, it seems, when you, in terms of the various percentages. I wonder if you'd consider adding a second threshold once the financial statements submitted to the state auditor, you'd consider going up to, say, 90%?
You're cutting out, John?
Yeah, I was afraid of that. So is this better now?
Yes, you cut out after 90%. You said second threshold after 90%.
Yeah, I was saying, do you consider a second threshold after the financial statements are submitted to the state auditor's office, so 69% while work not
Okay.
financial statements have been submitted for your review.
Ms. Kerr?
Yes, Auditor Cologne?
May I take a moment to ask John to put his well-received comment in the chat, just to make sure we have it in its entirety, because your connection was slightly spotty. I think we got the idea. But if you'd put that in the chat, Mr. Kennedy, that would be super helpful. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Kerr.
Thank you, Auditor Cologne. And your comment will be entered into the public comments, Mr. Kennedy. Thank you. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.8 N1 NMAC Replace "may" with "shall" with regard to submitting contract amendments to the OSA. Clarify Applicable Engagement Types The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9 A NMAC Added a Requirement That Annual Financial Report Shall Be Submitted Electronically Replace the Requirement to Submit an Organized Bound Copy The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9 A1D NMAC Added ECECD to the List of Agencies with the Due Date of November 15. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9 A3 NMAC Added a Requirement That All Reports Will Be Submitted Electronically Replace the Requirement to Submit an Organized Bound Copy Remove Postmarked Requirements. Excuse me. The hearing is now open for questions or comments related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9 B1 NMAC Added a Requirement That the Annual Financial Audit Report Shall Be Submitted Electronically Remove Postmarked Requirements The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no, seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.9 B3K NMAC Added a Requirement to Include OSA Agency Number and Final Audit Report File Name The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hand raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 A NMAC Remove the word "scope" of from the subsection title. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 A1A NMAC Remove Statement Requiring OSA Permission to Present a Component Unit as Other Than Discreet Presentation, deferring instead to GASBIE guidance. The hearing is open to comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 D4 NMAC Clarify the Language Regarding Preparing Financial Statements in Their Entirety From a Client Provided Trial Balance and Referred IPAs to the GAGAS Conceptual Framework for Evaluating Independence The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 E1 NMAC. Added language clarifying that audit documentation, including work papers, are the property of the IPA or certificate holder per subsection A of Section 61-28B-25 NMSA 1978. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 E2 NMAC. Added clarifying language. State auditor review of audit documentation does not transfer the ownership of the documents. Ownership of the audit documentation is maintained by the IPA or responsible certificate holder. The hearing is open to comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 H1 NMAC. Replace work papers with audit documentation. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 J1 NMAC. Add it a requirement that all agencies must retain support for procurement until the contract expires or the minimum time required for record retention is met, whichever is longer. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 J6 NMAC. Added language requiring IPAs to evaluate and test internal controls as related to PERA. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 J7 NMAC. Added language requiring IPAs to evaluate and test internal controls as related to ERA. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.1017 NMAC. Added language regarding NM-RHCA to reflect requirements for PERA and ERA. The IPA shall evaluate and test internal controls regarding employee eligibility for NM-RHCA and other benefits. IPA shall evaluate risks associated with employees excluded from NM-RHCA and test that employees are properly excluded. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 L1 NMAC. Added an example of how findings should be numbered for clarity. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Ms. Armio, I see your hand raised. Do you have the floor?
Okay, thank you. Just a quick comment that I am glad the original year and finding number is maintained here in this proposed change, because I think from a legislative perspective, governing board perspective, even executive, it's important to know how long these findings have been outstanding and not addressed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Armio. Any more comments or questions? Seeing no hands raised, no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 M4 NMAC. Added as described in 2.2.2.9 B4A NMAC for further clarification on the waiver. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 M5 NMAC. Added "OSA and the" preceding IPA shall not disclose audit documentation if such disclosure would undermine the effectiveness or integrity of the audit process. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Ms. Armio, I see that your hand is raised. Do you have the floor?
Thank you. I did notice one of the bills that's being proposed at this time deals with this issue as well. And in asked my advice about it, I thought that it was a great idea. We don't want to be impacting whistleblowers negatively by forcing documents to be provided through IPRA. And the investigation process does need to continue on without release of the information. If the statute does pass, I assume that it wouldn't change anything here in the rule, but just wanted to voice again my support for this change.
Thank you for your support, Ms. Armio. That will be entered into the public comments. Do we have any more comments or questions? Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 N2 NMAC. Added clarifying language regarding notifications. Added non-attest accounting engagement to types of engagements required to follow 2.2.2.15 NMAC when entering into a professional services contract. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 P3F NMAC. Removed requirement for IPAs auditing cash of state agencies to obtain a confirmation of cash at the individual agency level from STO. The hearing is open for comments or questions regarding this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 P4D NMAC. Revised sentence marginally for clarity. Sentence now reads, "To determine compliance with the 102% pledge collateral requirement of Section 6-10-10 NMSA 1978, the disclosure shall include the dollar amount of the following for each repurchase agreement: 102% pledge collateral requirement per statute and total pledge collateral." The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 R2A NMAC. Remove portion of first sentence that stated, "Funded by severance tax bonds or general obligation bonds of the state." The sentence now reads, "Special deficiency, specific, and capital outlay appropriations shall be disclosed in the notes to the financial statements." The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 Y2 NMAC. Remove the illustrative example from GASP's Comprehensive Information Guide, Chapter 5. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 Z NMAC. Remove subsection title to GASP 77... Or, excuse me, change subsection title to GASP 77 Tax Abatement Agreements. Remove federal sub-references. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.10 AA4 NMAC. Removed requirement for a concurrent review of the schedule of employer allocations for retiree healthcare authority. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.13 D NMAC. Added clarification that results of work paper reviews are confidential audit documentation. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. Removed redundant information on CPE. Added language clarifying type of applicable engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.14 B6 NMAC. Deleted the word "his" and added the word "the" to make the firm gender neutral in the following sentence. "If the CPA is performing any type of attest work subject to this rule, the firm shall maintain a New Mexico firm permit." The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Auditor Cologne, I see you have your hand raised. Do you have the floor?
Thank you. I'll just quickly say that during our time in office together, we have really done everything we can to truly embrace diversity in our office and lift up the fantastic team members we have, but I think this particular change is long in coming. We're a little late getting this corrected and that the legislature has done what it can to embrace gender-neutral language in our statutes. And I just want to say that today, as we begin Women's History Month, it's the perfect opportunity to give a thumbs up for this change during this public comment hearing. So my public comment would be is I fully support this and the other suggestions by the team and embrace the feedback that's been given by other stakeholders. But happy Women's History Month. Thanks to all the ladies on this call and thanks to all the ladies that really kind of run my office. Everybody knows that Deputy Auditor Natalie Cordova, CPA, plays a substantial role in, in the office, and I don't do much without checking in with her and our leadership team. So thanks to all the ladies. Just a perfect time to say happy Women's History Month.
Thank you for your comments, Auditor Cologne. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.14 C NMAC. Replace "shall" with "may" with respect to quality control review for IPAs appearing on the OSA's list of approved firms for audit and AUP engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 NMSA, or NMAC. Revised section title due to new defined terms in audit rule. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands, seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 A5 NMAC. Clarify confidentiality provisions and added references to other applicable provisions within the audit rule. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 B NMAC. Revised subsection title due to new defined terms in the audit rule. The hearing is open for comments or questions in regards to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 B1. Replace forensic audits with forensic accounting engagements. Added, "It also includes engagements performed under the forensic services standards issued by the AICPA and engagements performed following the Code of Professional Standards issued by the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, ACFE." The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 B2 NMAC. Replace forensic audits with forensic accounting engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 B3 NMAC. Replace forensic audits with forensic accounting engagements. Replace audit with engagement. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 B9 NMAC. Replace forensic audits with forensic accounting engagements. Added reference to forensic services and other professional standards with respect to finding requirements distinguished between attest and non-attest engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no... Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 B10 NMAC. Replaced forensic audit with forensic accounting engagement added if applicable. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move to the next proposed 2.2.2.15 B11. Replaced audit with accounting in reference to forensic engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 C NMAC. Revised subsection title due to new defined terms in audit rule. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 C1 NMAC. Replaced forensic audits with forensic accounting engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 C2 NMAC. Replaced forensic audit with forensic accounting engagement. Reference 2.2.2.10 F NMAC regarding restrictions on engagement letter. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 C3 NMAC. Replaced forensic audit with forensic accounting engagement. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.15 D NMAC. Added subsection on finding requirements for special audits or engagements. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Ms. Armio, I see your hand raised. Do you have the floor?
Thank you. So similarly with the other comment I had on the legislation proposed, I am in support of clarifying this for special engagements forensics in that we should have findings with all parts to the findings in these special engagements reported. The importance for this, and my belief, is for the state to be able to, well, the agencies to be able to move forward with corrective action. So not only when they go through a very difficult situation such as a possible fraud, do they need to know what occurred, they also need to know from a consultant or an expert in our area of how to correct these things so that they don't happen again and have good advice from us IPAs on the roadmap forward. That's what I always call it. Basically, the findings are their roadmap forward to be able to fix things. And without that, they're not getting their money's worth, is what I always say. So when we go in there, look at everything, identify what we can, you know, as professionals, we are going to know the recommended advice for the future, especially under a consulting contract. So definitely in favor of this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Armio. Do we have any other comments or questions regarding this proposed change? Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.16 F3 NMAC. Context was changed to allow the IPA and the local public body to agree upon how the exit conference will occur. This now reads as, "The exit conference shall occur in the forum agreed to by the local public body and the IPA to include virtual or telephonic options. The OSA reserves the right to require an in-person exit conference." The hearing is now open for comments or questions regarding this proposed change. And do you see a hand raised? Ms. Armio, you have the floor?
Thank you. I agree with the change here since our meetings can be virtual. I think that that's great. Just to comment on a different part of it, there is some confusion out there I've noticed on entrance conferences. And although it is required by our standards, I think that the clients don't always include the component units or members of governance for the entrance conferences. So just a suggestion for a change, I know that that's required of the exits, and it is also required of the school districts that have the statute regarding audit committees. But for the other governmental entities, I think the entrance conference, the governing bodies or representation from the governing bodies, from the component units, which would include the charters, foundations, et cetera, and governance itself should attend the entrance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Armio. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this proposed change? Seeing no more hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will move on to the next proposed change. 2.2.2.16 J NMAC. The requirement to submit an electronic version of the finding summary form was removed as it is no longer required. The hearing is open for comments or questions related to this proposed change. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will now open the hearing for comments or questions related to any of these proposed changes to the audit rule from the audience. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment, or let us know in the chat if you have any written comments to submit. When I recognize you, please begin by stating your name and the agency or organization you represent. If you are appearing by telephone and wish to make a comment, please do so now. Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next item on the agenda. Agenda item six, other comments. I will now open the hearing for general comments or questions from the audience. Does anyone want to comment on any other aspect of the proposed audit rule? Please raise your hand or unmute yourself if you wish to make a comment, or let us know in the chat if you have any written comments to submit. Please begin by stating your name and the organization you represent. At the end of your comment or question, I may ask audit staff to respond to your comment or answer any questions before moving to the next comment or question. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Seeing no hands raised and hearing no comments, I will move to the next item on the agenda. Agenda item seven, closing remarks. Thank you all for your thoughtfulness in your comments and presentations and for your input. The Office of the State Auditor will carefully consider each comment prior to the finalization of the audit rule. I will make one last call. Does anyone have any other comments or questions related to the proposed audit rule? Seeing no hands raised and hearing no more comments, I will adjourn this meeting. Auditor Cologne, I see you have your hand raised. You have the floor.
Far be it from me not to take advantage of 60 people being on the line here as we close out. Thank you, Lisa Kerr, for conducting and acting as a hearing officer. As the Office of the State Auditor, I think is the official hearing officer for the overall event. But thank you for facilitating all those comments and insights and feedback on this proposed rule. I want to say thank you to each of you who made comments to the hard work and to these proposals that we've embraced and put forward as being in the best interest of all our stakeholders. Our team works diligently to take feedback throughout the year. We don't just take the feedback from our stakeholders during the time of public comment, but throughout the year. And we maintain that feedback. And then as we get ready to reconsider changes to our audit rule, we take all that feedback we've gotten throughout the year into consideration. So there are some very important substantive changes to the rule this year, and we appreciate the feedback you've given to us, particularly on those substantive pieces that we worked so hard on. So with that, I just want to close again with saying it's been a real privilege to serve as the State Auditor of New Mexico. Every day has been awesome, and I get to work with a great group of civil servants who work diligently every day to lift up New Mexico and serve our stakeholders by embracing accountability, transparency, and excellence in government. We couldn't do that alone, especially couldn't do it without our IPAs. So know that you're always welcome to reach out to me anytime I can be helpful. So thank you to our Deputy State Auditor of New Mexico, Natalie Cordova, CPA. Thanks to all our executive team members and our team members from the Office of the State Auditor. Another particular shout out to Jesse and Lisa and Lynette, I think, who really did the heavy lift and the day-to-day wordsmithing and making sure that things did not fall through the cracks when it came to what we needed to contemplate to make this the most effective and efficient audit rule possible. Thank you to Frank Valdez for assisting with all the IT work, as he always does. He is our Director of IT at the Office of the State Auditor. And thanks to all of our members. For those of you I didn't mention specifically by name, you know I love you all very equally. On any given day, I could love one of you more equally than the other, but I love you all equally. And it's an honor and privilege to serve as the State Auditor of New Mexico. With that, I close and I will allow our facilitator and acting hearing officer here on behalf of the Office of the State Auditor, Lisa Kerr, to adjourn unless there are further comments from the public or our stakeholders. And thanks again to all of you who helped me throughout the year with everything, whether it's the legislature or whether it's with clients who are having challenges with communication. I really appreciate that every time I reach out, you're always there to respond. And thank you for that.
Thank you for your comments, Auditor Cologne. And the floor is open for any other comments or questions?
I love it. I never get the last word in Casa Colon. I got the last word in this hearing, and I am out. Thank you, everybody.
See no raised hands and hearing no more comments. John, did you have your hand raised or were you waving? Okay, just clarify.
Just waving.
Okay. I will adjourn this meeting. The time is approximately 2:55. Thank you.